Good evening. I call to order this special meeting of the Norman Public Schools Board of Education. Clerk, please call well. Tina Floyd.
Here.
Dirk O'Hara.
Here.
Alex Rives.
Here.
And Matt Price.
Here.
Don.
(laughing).
Brockman.
Here.
Thank you. Would you, if you will, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible).
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our routine business. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda items A through J as listed. Second.
Any questions? Clerk Caldwell, please.
Tina Floyd.
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara.
Yes.
Alex Rives.
Yes.
And Matt Price.
Yes.
Don Brockman.
Yes.
All right. I would like to ask Mr. Milner to come up. I think he has a little presentation for us. And Gary Armbruster from MA+ Architecture.
All right. Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Millerino, as Gary joins me at the podium. Just want to take a minute to remind you when last we were here to discuss the Norman North Stadium. We talked about, at that time, the process that we went through to gather the stakeholder input. And we also discussed a location of the stadium on the Norman North campus. And since then, you've approved the purchase of the track surface and also the football field. And so, this evening, Mr. Armbruster is going to take you through the schedule, in addition to the schematic design for the stadium itself. The schedule is going to be important, as we've discussed in the past, because our goal through this process is to minimize the impact on the sports. So you're going to see some things as we go through the bid tab later on in the next presentation that'll be a little bit out of a sequence, but all of that has a purpose, and you'll see that as we talk through the schedule itself. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary.
Well, thank you again for allowing me to be here today. I've been doing this for 27 years, and this is the fastest I've ever got to a board presentation. So thank you. This is awesome. In any school, any school district. This is great. Thank you. All right. All right. Pushing forward. There we go. There we go. So, starting with the existing site plan to remind everyone where we started with this. This is a view of how everything looks today with the existing football, track and field. You can see baseball, softball there, to the right soccer. And to the very far right, the area in red was pre-bond. We didn't own that land. And so, post-bond, the opportunity came up for Norman Public Schools to purchase that land. That allowed us to really look at everything in a different way and allow us to expand the new stadium and track and field to the north. So just kind of set everybody up for what we're going to see next. So, this is the view or the rendering that we have for what we are presenting tonight. What you've seen before, but now we're going into more clearer detail. So, on the far right, in that area that was surrounded by the red dash line, that's where the new track and field is going to go. New practice field will go in between that track and field. To the left of that track, there's a gray parking lot area. That's where the practice field sits today. That will become new parking. And the north entrance to the stadium. And then, where the football field is shown, 5,500 seats on the visitor's side, on the west side, and 500 seats on the visitor's side. On the home side has 5,500 seats, visitors has 500 seats, and then the new turf field for that. To the far left of the turf field is our new restroom and concessions building as part of this whole complex idea that we're presenting to you tonight. So, this is a view getting closer each time. Now, this on the top of the screen is the 5,500-seat home side with press box. Just at the bottom of the screen, 500 seats for visitors, the new turf field in the center. New scoreboard to the right of that, you can see on the north side. And on that left, that white roof building is our new restrooms and concessions building. And we're going to go through some renderings here that kind of walks you through and lets you see how you enter the stadium and what it's going to look like as we...
Gary, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And the wraparound is just because of high competition. Sorry, I didn't push anything.
Go back. So, it's very tight on the roadway next to the stadium. So, we are building right on that property line. And so, we have to wrap around to get the right amount of seats for 5,500. Yes, that's correct. And this is going to give it a more intimate feel. Most stadiums that you've been to probably have really tall bleachers. This one's going to feel more intimate, and I think it's going to have a feel that most stadiums won't have. Everyone's going to be a lot closer to the field of action. So, it's going to have a lot better feel for that closeness to the stadium than most stadiums do. So, as you're walking in from the south, there's an existing ticket and entry near Nancy O'Brien, near baseball, near the weight room building, there's an existing ticket booth. Everyone will come in through that location, and just past the weight room facility, it opens up, and this is what you will see. So, the area that says "Home of the Timberwolves" and "Norman North Timberwolves," that's our new building that has the restrooms and concessions as part of it. And then, you can see the stadium and the press box in the background, and then to the right of that, the new scoreboard. So, the next shot is going to be kind of what a player will see as they're exiting the locker room. You can see we've got some paw prints on the ground. We've got fans on either side. Players will walk through the fans to enter the field. You can see on the left, the new press box and the 5,500 seats to the left of that. It's going to have a nice player view. And in the far background, you see the scoreboard. And this is a view from essentially the visitor's side of the stadium, looking back toward the new home side and the new press box. You can see on that, and then on the far right, the new scoreboard. And then, this is a view if I were standing on the north end of the stadium, looking directly south. I've got the home side on my right with the press box, looking straight down the field at the new restrooms and concessions building. Far left is the visitors. Now, we're out on the street, just outside, so you can see the new press box really big and bold as you drive up the street. Norman North Timberwolves, future field name there for the stadium. But you can see it's going to be a really nice entry to the stadium, a nice look from the street. And then, as we transition to the other end, you can see just kind of a little bit different view of the field or the press box. And then, as we transition to the next slide or image, you can see what it looks like as it transitions tonight. So, we'll have lights on the press box, lights on the stadium, obviously, lights underneath the stadium that will give it a nice view from the street. And then, this is an aerial view of sort of the whole campus, if you will, with home stands, press box, restrooms, concessions on the far left, and the new turf field. So, want to go through what Justin had mentioned, sort of the phasing of this. We've already started bidding. In fact, Manhattan will be presenting the bids for the bleachers here in a bit. But Phase 1, at the top of the screen, will be the new track. And we've had numerous meetings with TD, staff. TD has had numerous meetings with all the coaches to ensure that we're not hurting any sport as we're building this. We are phasing this in a way so sports can continue in this location. So, Phase 1 is the new track, and that will be the new track. And then, within that track, the new practice field. Phase 2, that's in purple shown here, is where the existing practice field is. That's where the new parking will go. So, we're transitioning. We're not hurting the practice field. Soccer remains active the entire time. We're not hurting soccer, baseball, or softball. And then, Phase 3 is the stadium support buildings, the concessions building, the press box. And then, finally, the last thing that we're going to put in is the turf field. That'll be the last thing. Everything will start coming together in pieces, and that turf field will be the last piece to go in. So, that's Phase 4. And then, this may be a little hard to see, but essentially, it's going through the phases that we discussed just now, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, with the goal of having all of this complete by August of 2025 in time for football season next year. So, again, we've had a lot of meetings with TD and coaches to ensure that student safety is paramount and student activities is continuing throughout this construction process. Any questions?
I have one of the clarifications. And the track that we're going to build is competition size, unlike the current one?
That is a good point, Dr. Nick. Yes, this will be a brand-new competition-level track and field, eight-lane running track, so you can host events in the future.
Other one's shorter.
Other one's shorter. That's correct. That's correct.
Can I ask a question about the marching band? I know that you talked about the sports not being affected, but how will that affect their practicing?
So, they're still going to have the existing field open for that, and it's not toward the end, I think, of Phase... Let me go back to that. You can see the turf field itself is Phase 4. It's further along, so they're still going to be able to practice. They can also practice, once the new track is in that area is finished, they can practice within that practice field area as well.
And Don, hopefully, we can get them off... They choose to march on the parking lot right now. It's not... Because we did build, you know, the current turf that's there so they could march on it, but they chose to stay on the parking lot. We hope that we'll get them to choose to be in the stadium. So, I have a great question, though.
No, the parking lot, obviously, is closer to the band rooms right now. And Dr. Nick's right, that was a choice on their end to continue to practice there. Other questions?
I've got a few. Imagine that. How many seats, home and visitor, does Harv Collins have?
Right offhand, I don't know the exact amount for Harv Collins, but we were trying as best to match the home and visitor side that Harv Collins had for this new stadium, keeping those as equitable as possible.
But I still think Harv Collins has a few more seats than the Norman North Stadium.
Just because of the height and the...
Correct.
And then, will we see the proper term, the tiger rising of Harv Collins? Will that be presented, or is that going to happen at the same time that this will be happening?
So, obviously, we have another season where they will share the stadium. So, we'll have those plans coming over the course of next year with the summer of 2025 for that to take place for Harv Collins, therefore allowing both stadiums to be representing the respective high school.
And then, if you go back to the site plan, you had mentioned that you'll be using the existing ticket booth area, which is the south side of the complex.
Yes, and what I didn't mention is we would be adding a ticket booth on the north side as well.
Thank you. That's going to be my question. So, you've got a lot of people parking there. That'd be a long walk.
No, it would, and that's going to be a dual-use area. So, you can park there for soccer, enter through that ticket booth for soccer, and also for football.
And then, last question on your face.
New practice field will go in between that track and field. To the left of that track, there's a gray parking lot area. That's where the practice field sits today. That will become new parking and the north entrance to the stadium. And then where the football field is shown, 5,500 seats on the visitor's side, on the west side, and 500 seats on the visitor's side. On the home side has 5,500 seats, visitors has 500 seats. And then the new turf field for that. To the far left of the turf field is our new restroom and concessions building as part of this whole complex idea that we're presenting to you tonight. So this is a view getting closer each time. And now this on the top of the screen is the 5,500-seat home side with press box. Just at the bottom of the screen, 500 seats for visitors, the new turf field in the center, new scoreboard to the right of that. You can see on the north side and on that left, that white roof building is our new restrooms and concessions building. And we're going to go through some renderings here that kind of walks you through and lets you see how you enter the stadium and what it's going to look like as we.
Gary, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Real quick.
Yeah.
The wraparound is just because of high concentration. It's a number of seats.
Getting, sorry, I didn't push anything. We'll go back. So that's, it's very tight on, on the roadway next to the stadium. So we have to pull, we are building right on that property line. And so we have to wrap around to get the, the right amount of seats for 5,500. Yes, that's correct. And this is going to give it a more intimate feel. Most stadiums that you've been to probably have really tall bleachers. This one's going to feel more intimate and I think it's going to have a feel that most stadiums won't have. Everyone's going to be a lot closer to the field of action. So it's going to have a lot better feel for, for that closeness to the stadium than most stadiums do. So as you're walking in from the south, there's an existing ticket and entry near Nancy O'Brien, near baseball, near the weight room building, there's an existing ticket booth. Everyone will come in through that location and just past the weight room facility, it opens up and this is what you will see. So the area that says home of the Timberwolves and Norman North Timberwolves, that's our new building that has the restrooms and concessions as part of it. And then you can see the stadium and the press box in the background and then to the right of that, the new scoreboard. So the next shot is going to be kind of what a player will see as they're exiting the locker room. You can see we've got some paw prints on the ground. We've got fans on either side. Players will walk through the fans to enter the field. You can see on the left, the new press box and the 5,500 seats to the left of that. It's going to have a nice player view. And in the far background, you see the scoreboard. And this is a view from essentially the visitor's side of the stadium, looking back toward the new home side and the new press box. Can see on that and then on the far right, the new scoreboard. And then this is a view if I were standing on the north end of the stadium, looking directly south. I've got the home side on my right with the press box, looking straight down the field at the new restrooms and concessions building. Far left is the visitors. Now, we're out on the street just outside, so you could see the new press box really big and bold as you drive up the street. Norman North Timberwolves, future field name, or field name there for the stadium. But you can see it's going to be a really nice entry to the stadium, a nice look from the street. And then as we transition to the other end, you can see just kind of a little bit different view of the field or the press box. And then as we transition to the next slide or image, you can see what it looks like as it transitions tonight. So we'll have lights on the press box, lights on the stadium, obviously, lights underneath the stadium that will give it a nice view from, from the street. And then this is an aerial view of sort of the whole campus, if you will, with home stands, press box, restrooms, concessions on the far left and the new turf field. So want to go through what Justin had mentioned, sort of the phasing of this. We've already started bidding. In fact, Manhattan will be presenting the bids for the bleachers here in a bit. But phase one, at the top of the screen, will be the new track. And we've had numerous meetings with TD, staff. TD has had numerous meetings with all the coaches to ensure that we're not hurting any sport as we're building this. We are phasing this in a way so sports can continue in this location. So phase one is the new track and that will be the new track. And then within that track, the new practice field. Phase two, that's in purple shown here is where the existing practice field is. That's where the new parking will go. So we're transitioning. We're not hurting the practice field. Soccer remains active the entire time. We're not hurting soccer, baseball or softball. And then phase three is the stadium support buildings and the concessions building, the press box. And then finally, the last thing that we're going to put in is the, is the turf field. That'll be the last thing. Everything will start coming together in pieces and that turf field will be the last piece to go in. So that's phase four. And then this may be a little hard to see, but essentially it's going through the phases that we discussed just now, phase one, two, three and four, with the goal of having all of this complete by August of 2025 in time for football season next year. So again, we, we've had a lot of meetings with TD and coaches to ensure that student safety is paramount and student activities is continuing throughout this construction Any questions?
I have one of the clarification.
Yes.
The track that we're going to build is competition size unlike the current one.
That is a good point, Dr. Nick. Yes, this is a current, this will be a brand new competition level track and field, eight lane running track. So you can host events in the future.
Other one's short, is that right?
Other one's shorter. That's correct.
Can I ask a question about the marching band? I know that you talked about the sports not being affected, but how will that affect their practicing?
So they're still going to have the existing field open for that. And it's not toward the end, I think, of phase, let me go back to that. You can see the turf field itself is phase four. It's further along, so they're still going to be able to practice. They can also practice, once the new track is, in that areas is finished, they can practice within that practice field area as well.
And Don, hopefully we can get them off, they choose to march on the parking lot right now. It's not, because we did build, you know, the, the current turf that's there so they could march on it, but they chose to stay on the parking lot. We hope that we'll get them to choose to be in the stadium. So I have a great question though.
Now, the parking lot obviously is closer to the band rooms right now. And Dr. Nick's right, that was a choice on their end to continue to practice there. Other questions?
I've got a few. Imagine that. How many seats, home and visitor, does Harv Collins have?
Right offhand, I, I don't know the exact amount, amount for Harv Collins, but we were trying as best to match the home and visitor side that Harv Collins had for this new stadium, keeping those as equitable as possible.
But I still think Harv Collins has a few more seats than the Norman North Stadium.
Just because the height and the.
Correct. Correct.
And then will we see the, the proper term, the tiger rising of Harv Collins? Will that be presented or is that going to happen at the same time that this will be happening?
So obviously we have another season where they will share the stadium. So we'll have those plans coming over the course of next year with the summer of 2025 for that to take place for Harv Collins, therefore allowing both stadiums to be representing the high school, the respective high school.
And then if you go back to the site plan, you had mentioned that you'll be using the existing ticket booth area, which is the south side of the complex.
Yes, and what I didn't mention is we would be adding a ticket booth on the north side as well.
Thank you. That's going to be my, that's going to be my question. So you've got a lot of people parking there, that'd be a long walk.
No, it would. And that's going to be a dual-use area. So you can park there for soccer, enter through that ticket booth for soccer and also for football.
And then last question on your phasing. Phase three was lasting longer than the turf. What's that last month of going on in phase three? Or two months or, no, it's a month.
Phase three.
Phase three was going through August and.
I mean, there's just going to be a lot going on with all the restroom facilities being built, the press box being built, even though we're approving tonight the ordering of the bleacher system. It's going to be quite a few months out. That's why we're doing it early. After the bleachers get in, then we need to build the press box. That's not part of the bleacher system. So there's going to be some continued destruction, not right next to the field. So that's why press box and the concessions and restrooms building may be a little bit longer, but the goal is to have everything open at the same time for that football season. Turf is pretty quick, but we want to clear the area around it so they can go ahead and do that. The other thing is you, you can see it's starting in April of that year. The biggest time to change turf for all the turf companies is the summer before football season. So we're trying to get in ahead of the game to get the turf company in there to start early so they can finish early.
Will there be any updated civil engineering or is the grade and everything where the turf is, we're staying at that grade and all the, that engineering is already completed? They won't have to mess with that again?
That, that engineering is done. There's already drainage underneath the field, so we're pulling that off, off the existing field, but you know, we're not changing that. We are correcting some drainage around the soccer field currently. In one corner, there's some areas that flood. We are correcting.
You're reading my mind, so.
And fixing that. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. It's all happening.
Yes.
I have a question. What kind of considerations are we giving to security, both of the Norman North Stadium and possible improvement at Norman High?
So you have the ticket booths, so the entry points being limited so that we can control those entry points, much like we handled Harv Collins this past season with the weapons detection and the CSC staff that we utilized. So the entry points are the key to these two stadiums.
And we will have fencing all the way around the perimeter of everything, track and field included.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to just walk right off the sidewalk into the track and field or.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And offsetting, I think also the parking, Mrs. Price, I think the parking, being able to have that additional parking lot there and that ticket booth, we can also kind of divide those crowds as well, which will also help with the flow of walking traffic into the stadium with just two points of entry.
Now, that will help immensely dividing that traffic up.
So the fencing will go all the way around the property?
Yes, yes, including the track and field.
All right, thank you, Mr. Armbruster. I mispronounced, I apologize.
Oh, you're good, good. Thank you very much.
All right, now I think Mr. Milner is going to stay with us and bring Mr. Jason White from Manhattan Construction in.
Yes, so this is for action and Mr. White couldn't make it to the rescheduled board meeting. So we have our good friend Brent Collins, who's vice president of operations and certainly most stranger to the podium. So as we went through the schedule and we alluded to just a few minutes ago, the purpose of this is to go ahead and procure those items that have that long lead time. And so that's why you see bleachers before you tonight. And so Mr. Collins will take you through that.
I promise I tried to, tried to provide an upgrade with Mr. White in taking over the presentations, but you're stuck with me tonight. Apologize. Gary fortunately did a very good job of describing it, so it's going to cut my part of the presentation very short. We had really good participation considering the limited scope of work that this is. There's a lot of, there's not a lot of people who build, design and build these structures. So we got three bids and that was one more than we were really anticipating, which was good. Shows that they're very interested in a good quality job. It includes the structure, the seating and all the things that are turnkey with the bleachers. I'll skip over the description since Gary already did it, but as you can see here, we've got a total of three bids. We're recommending Southern Bleacher to, as low bidder, that was a complete and comprehensive bid to be selected and move forward with our procurement process. As Justin alluded to, there's a long design and procurement process, so if we can get started tomorrow, that'd be fantastic.
I make a motion to award the construction contract for Norman North High School Stadium seating procurement to Southern Bleacher as presented.
I second the motion.
Any questions? All right, Colville, please.
Tina Floyd.
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara.
Yes.
Alex Regiers.
Yes.
Annette Price.
Yes.
Don Brockman.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We're getting better at this.
All right, I think now up to the podium, we'll have Ms. Holly Nevels and talk about the school calendar.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, Dr. Millarina, members of the board. Normally I come to you this time of year to talk to you about days to hours. We're going to get there, but before we get there, since we are talking about the 24-25 calendar, I also wanted to give you a little peek into my calendar notebook here and what it looks like as things come up and we have to bring possible revisions to our school calendar to you. So you all absolutely voted for this calendar and the January board meeting. And not very long ago, the University of Oklahoma had a change in their football schedule where they will now have their opening game rather than it being on Saturday, August 31st. They're going to do that on Friday, August 30th. And we are in school, currently scheduled right now to be in school on August 30th, which can be pretty problematic, safety-wise, transportation-wise, attendance-wise, all the things that come up when that happens. So we took this back to calendar committee and we looked at how to fix that, possibly fix that. And so between the calendar committee and our principals and the principal cadres and our curriculum team, we bring to you this proposed revision of not having school for staff or students on Friday, August 30th, which would then move the last day of school in 2025 from Thursday, May 22nd to Friday, May 23rd of that week. And then it would move the teacher work day originally scheduled for Friday, May 23rd to Tuesday, May 27th, just after Memorial Day. It will not change anything with regard to the calendar year approved as far as contract days, which is really important for all of our contracts, but particularly that teacher contract. And it will not change the number of instructional days. So that's one piece of information. In addition to that number of instructional days each year since 2009, we have brought the board the option of operating in days or hours. The choice is to operate in 180 days of instruction or 1,080 hours of instruction. As you can see, we typically have between 172 and 175 days of instruction, so we don't meet that 180. However, because in the past we've been allowed to operate hours, we exceed the 1,080 hours. And with this calendar, we will have 1,104 hours. And that allows us to build in time for inclement weather or emergency use without having to take days within the calendar that you've approved. So those are the two things I have for you with regard to the 24-25 calendar, the possible revision and operating in hours versus days.
I make a motion to approve the 1,080 hours calendar option for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. So how many inclement weather days does that give us?
It gives us four and like 4.9, Ms. Price. So four before we would have to make some decisions on adding a few minutes or doing a remote day or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
The teachers about the work day on Memorial Day, what was their thoughts?
So they, they always love it when they can finish everything up before the long Memorial Day weekend. It's, it's typical that we have had the teacher work day after Memorial Day weekend. And so we just remind our administrators that that is a teacher day. It is not a meeting day. It is not doing things that have to be required. We also allow teachers to check out, to do their checklist and be done before that day if they wish to, or they can come in that day and do their final checkout. And you all know, you're at our sites in the summer as we all are too. And sometimes they're still there clearing to June and July. So we know that sometimes that's just a day to give them to take care of whatever issues they want to take care of if they can be there on that day to do it.
All right, Colville.
Tina Floyd.
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara.
Yes.
Alex Regiers.
Annette Price.
Yes.
Don Brockman.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Oh, you're staying with us.
One more.
All right.
So a few months ago, we started our annual rehires with our administrative staff. We moved through our instructional staff and our teachers. And we are here in May to ask for the renewal or continued employment of all of our very important support staff who are currently on a support employee contract.
Make a motion for the renewal and/or continued employment of all sports staff currently on a support employee contract. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Colville, please.
Dirk O'Hara. Tina Floyd.
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara.
Yes.
Alex Regiers.
Yes.
Annette Price.
Yes.
Don Brockman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nevels. All right, is there any new business? No new business. Dr. Nick, do you have any administrative staff reports for us?
Yeah, I have a couple of exciting things that have gone. I'd like to. First of all, thank you to those of you who are able to make it to the ribbon cuttings at both Monroe and McKinley. We were able to finish up the storm shelters that were built at both those sites. Just a shout out to the community and, and all of those that helped us pass the 2019 bond as a reminder. Once these two were completed, we now have safe rooms at every one of our, our school sites that will accommodate the entire occupancy of, of those facilities. So really excited about that. But it doesn't, it needs to be said that we invested nearly $30 million into making sure that we got those storm safe places in all of our buildings. And that's because of our community passing the bond. And once again, that was the 2019 bond, I want to remind people. So it was just a lot of fun. Carrie got to see me interact with all the students at McKinley, excuse me, Monroe. We had the fourth graders there and our, our suite principal thought we were done after we took the pictures, but lo and behold, I got to disrupt that entire class of students and have them laying on the floor and yelling and screaming and disrupting the entire school because I told them at Monroe, they just, you know, reminded them they had just celebrated an anniversary and they saw a bunch of black and white pictures there. And I told them in about 50 years, they'll be the black and white pictures at the next huge celebration. And the same thing at McKinley, which the entire school was out on the playground, Alex. And I, they, I mean, when we showed up, they were so well behaved and in lines and just, you know, sitting down and paying attention. And then I showed up and I got them all up because they weren't going to be in the picture. So we had to make sure that all the students got in the picture on the ribbon cutting. So just an incredibly fun time. Once again, just love being out and about with the kids and the teachers and, but then once again, just a shout out to the, the community for passing the bond so that we could have those storm safe shelters. Another shout out, we haven't recognized this person in the past and hopefully we can get her here in the future. But in our business office, Brenda's office, Janine Warren was named the school business official of the year for 2024 by the Oklahoma Association of School Business Officials, Oklahoma ASBO. So a huge accomplishment for her. She'll be the one holding down the fort and she'll be the historical knowledge in that department for a while, beginning in July. But Janine's not here, but I just wanted to give her a shout out for that award and hopefully we can get her to a board meeting. And then finally, graduation season is upon us. And so just a reminder, next week, we celebrate all of our seniors and their accomplishments and hard work. Dimensions Academy holds their celebration next Tuesday evening at Norman High School, May 21st. Paul's back there, ready for that. Norman North graduation will be at Lloyd Noble on the 23rd and Norman High School's graduation Friday, the 24th. So just a public service announcement, those who are planning on attending, there is construction, but they also have all of their clear bag policies and security protocols in place. So get there early. With that, just looking forward to next week, other than the first week of school, this is one of my favorite times because everybody is coming together around a focused, a focus on students and graduations and transitions and all the different things. So good stuff. One other thing, I'm going to give a shout out to Brian King. Transcript is his last official board meeting with the transcript. Appreciate your service and storytelling and sharing all the things, great things happening in Norman Public Schools. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Dr. Nick. All right, do we have any administrative staff, or I'm sorry, any board reports?
Yeah, Thursday, I went to two really, really great events. First was the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Social at Monroe. And I mean, that was really special, seeing these kids of all ages who really don't get to interact with other people as, you know, large groups of other students with those kinds of disabilities. And it was really, it was great seeing these kids from all different grade levels kind of interacting and playing with each other and getting that opportunity that they normally don't get. And I thought that was a really great thing that, that our staff had put together. And then I went to the Indian Education Senior Night, which I will always take an opportunity to shower love on our Indian education program. They are fantastic. Our district is home to a former national Indian Ed Teacher of the Year. And one of the really great things that happened at this ceremony was that each student got a stole that was hand-stitched individually. Many of them were hand-stitched by Indian education staff in our district like the Monday before. So really it was beautiful seeing not only families share that moment with each other, but how much outpouring of love that was coming from the staff to our students and, and how much work they, like hours they had put in with their own hands crafting these beautiful things for their students. And then again, yes, thank you, Brian King, for all of your wonderful storytelling that you've done. You've been a great reporter on the education beat, so congratulations.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week, which was last week. And it's my hope that we acknowledge it all year. Honestly, our teachers are the lifeblood of this district and without them, where would we be? I think our Teacher of the Year, her son said it best this week that what would the world be like without teachers? And I think he said, we'd be just be running around with chickens with our heads cut off. And so I don't remember how old he is, he's in elementary school, but very wise for his years. Second or third grade Hudson, love Hudson.
And I'd like to jump in on that. I first wanted to point out that this school board thing is not for the fated heart. Two weeks ago was a big week with a school board member for the strategic plan that we did. And then I had training in Tulsa. And I, I just wanted everyone to know that I was exceedingly impressed by the work of our MPS cabinet on the strategic plan in preparation for the write-ups, videos and in-person interaction with us. And I think this is a perfect jumping off point for Teacher Appreciation Week and the ways that we show love to people. There are different ways, whether it be words of affirmation or quality time or gifts or hugs or high fives or, you know, acts of service. And I wanted to, I wanted our teachers to know that in that strategic plan that I saw an incredible investment of quality time and thoughtful, a lot of thought into ways that they can, that this district can serve them. And specifically that thoughtful plan for the supports for behavior was so impressive. I know that we were all impressed, like that included added funding, behavioral screening, in-school placement restructuring, aligning and adding paraprofessionals and all the wonderful things that you guys had planned. It really showed to me that you want to show by action that you appreciate our teachers and I cannot, I cannot thank you more for that. So I just wanted to end with that and that's the way that teachers should be appreciated. I hope we do it all year. Thank you.
Yes, yes and yes to everything they mentioned because it's been a, it's been a busy. a busy couple of weeks. Lots been going on, and a lot of great stuff. Want to reiterate what we've already heard about the Monroe and McKinley safe rooms, won't repeat what was said, but do want to mention that those were the last projects to complete on the 19 bond. I appreciate the work of Mr. Milner, of all of our construction partners, and everybody in there, whenever the prices kept going up, and up, and up, and then we paused and said, "Wait, we can't value-engineer this and skinny it down," because our voters passed what needed to be built, and we eventually, finally, got them built. And because of that, Monroe and McKinley are first on this round of bonds, and we are saving money, because we're not completing and finishing parts of the building, we're just adding on to the classrooms, that will finally get rid of portables at both of those locations, or at least less than the portables, as fast as they're going. I'm not going to say we'll eliminate them, but just thanks for the patience of everyone on that, and thanks for the work, for us being efficient with taxpayers' dollars. Want to mention the baby steps senior recognition that many of us were at. As always, it was a wild and crazy romper room, but it was so great to see our teen parents get the support and the love that they deserve to finish their education. Want to mention that we appreciate the partnership with Crossroads, and all the help they give us with the Junior League of Norman for the facility, and the volunteer hours that they give us, and for all of our MPS team that coordinates those partnerships and works together to make sure it all works together. Want to echo Alex on the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Social. This was the 2nd year that Monroe has hosted that social, and appreciate all the older kids coming. Last year, it was all a bunch of younger kids. It was great to see some of our high school kids show up, and let the little kids see, hey, the big kids are just like us, and we can, we can be successful as they are. Brian, thank you. You've done a great job with the exposure of Norman Public Schools to the paper, has dramatically increased while you've been serving us, and however we can help the new person, please let us know, because it's great to just be able to tell all the crazy stories, and the fun stories that happen, you know, throughout the year. So thank you for all your hard work, and just thank you for always digging and poking, and what's going on here, and how can, you know, what do I need to report here, and, oh, by the way, we're going to report this no matter what. So, we just, we appreciate that your approach to journalism has been very professional. Trying to read my own writing, sorry. The stole's, I was impressed that there was 140 or 50 that they had to hand-stitch, so it was, that was crazy, the amount, and the Indian Ed celebration was second to none. Appreciate all the work with the people that did that. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you all. Lots of great comments, and I just want to kind of echo everything that was already said. I was at several of these events, too, and I got to see Dr. Nick get the kids completely riled up, and then just drop a mic and walk away, like, that's what he does. So, I do not envy those principals or teachers, but it was great. Again, echoing off of Teacher Appreciation Week, I tried to stop in some schools last week, and for no other reason, just to say thank you. I don't know if educators always get to hear those words, and sometimes, it's not what we can take them, and it's just a thank you. So, thank, thank our teachers and staff anytime we can, not just during that 1 week. I think that's been said, so. And finally, when I was there, I went to the book fair, because who doesn't go to the book fair? And I bought a book about Ruby Bridges at our book fair. I know, I was so happy, because we saw her speak when we were at our board conference in New Orleans. And so, I bought it, I should have bought us all one, but it was, it was good. So, thank you for letting us come in your schools during this hectic time. I know that you don't even know what day it is, a lot of the days of the week, when you're teaching at this time of year, so I know we all appreciate us, you letting us come in and see what's happening at your school and your, in your classroom. And with that, that's all I have, so...
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Tina Floyd.
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara.
Yes.
Alex Regiers.
Yes.
Annette Price.
Yes.
Don Brockman.
Yes.